Bangin'.
It's now six thirty. I'd like to call this, uh, June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, City of Menneson Council Meeting to Order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Orchakowski?
Here.
Councilperson Thomas. Councilman Nestor?
Present.
Councilman Gregor?
Here.
Mayor Moser?
Present.
I want to note four members here, mayor and a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to lead the prayer. Fairway, please rise. Heavenly Father, thank you for every person who is present this evening at this meeting. It is amazing that each one, that you know each one of us as though they were only one. There is not a single thing hidden from you. You know our strengths and our weaknesses. Through your grace and providence, we have brought, you have brought us all together. I ask that you help us function, not as individuals with our own motives, but as a unified team working towards a common goal. May our thoughts be led by you and our conversations and actions be inspired by you. Please grant us the wisdom in times of uncertainty and clarity in times of confusion. Lead us to solutions that help strengthen each other as a group. May we come together this evening and not as individuals with our own motives, but as a family working together as a common goal, with our eyes focused on you to do your will. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, just so everybody knows, we are going to add a motion as between A and B on my motions at the beginning of the meeting to approve the summer feeding program at the Menneson Civic Center at eight sixty-one Donner Avenue from June nineteenth through August eleventh. Ages eighteen and under are welcome to participate. Sponsored by the Westmoreland County Food Bank, it'll run Monday through Thursday, breakfast at ten a.m. to eleven a.m., lunch at twelve to one p.m. The program is included. Uh, there will also be a mobile food market available June twenty-second, July seventeenth, July thirty-first, from noon to one p.m. So that will be a motion that we're gonna add.
I need a motion and a second to amend the agenda.
Need a motion and a second?
Motion on the reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. At this time, I'd ask, uh, council to review the, uh, minutes from the previous session of June eighth and, uh, make a motion to accept them and when ready.
Mayor, motion to approve the previous session's, uh, minutes of June eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's actually a correction that should go in there. It, uh, says fire account and it should be fire escrow account.
Okay, make a note.
He already did.
Very good. Any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to, uh, open the floor for public comment on agenda items only.
My name is Jordan, I'm telegraphist, and I have questions for John Nestor. John, I, I know she got four different invoices by, um, Certicide. Can you tell me, who negotiated these invoices? Was it you or somebody else?
Um, the mayor has actually, did me a solid and actually was able to sit down with them and to look over the contracts. Um, I stopped down, which was yesterday, to look over and to pick out any mistakes, called them back, and this is what the final answers were. Um, they're gonna be fixing, um, the sensors, which we need to be done, the dialer. Um, they're also gonna be replacing, I think, or fixing the thirteen or how many?
The monitried service.
Service, but also, um, the extinguishers we have at the city garage that are expired.
Okay, I'm not questioning what they're gonna do. It's the amount. You got four invoices, almost two thousand dollars.
Twenty-four hundred.
Okay, twenty-four hundred. And, um, did anybody try to get a discount from them or?
Yes.
How much did they give you discount on?
It's about half the price of anybody else that we were able to talk to.
Did you knock it down? Okay, because normally when there's multiple invoices, I always ask the CFO, you know, if there was a knockdown. Okay, and then, um, I reserve questioning, um, the CFO here until next month when we get the audit report.
You can question her, but I won't be here.
Anybody else have any comments on agenda items?
Uh, my name is Julian. I am the director of the Menneson Civic Center. Um, since the mayor made a motion to add the, oh, I talked on.
Well, but it needs to go on to YouTube and all that.
Um, since the mayor made a motion to approve the summer feeding program down at the civic center, um, added on to that was the approval of the, um, having a weekly open gym down at the civic center, um, which consists of the kids coming down once a week at a certain timeframe to play basketball or whatever other program I have going on down there. Um, I have done this, um, program in the past, but found out recently that it was not approved by council, and so I was not able to continue doing it. Um, and I, um, actually, as of last week, I had some kids come down for the timeframe and I was not able to let them in because, into the civic center because the, it wasn't approved by council. Um, I actually have two of the kids with me here who regularly attend the open gyms, um, that would like to explain to you why it's important to have them.
My name is King Shabazz. I like to go down to the civic center open gym because I always feel like the safe place to go play basketball with my friends.
Uh, hello guys, my name is Kezir Butler. I also love going down to civic because it, uh, gets me away from all the violence and stuff and it gives me something to do. And it also gives me a safe place to play basketball, instead of being out, like, just being outside in the cold weather and stuff like that.
Thank you. Um, so, like I said, the open gym, um, it doesn't cost anything. Of course, it, we have to turn on the electricity, but that doesn't, that hardly costs anything a month. Um, they come down for two hours. Um, I have community members who donate water, who donate drinks. I coordinate the whole thing, um, along with Menneson communities that care. Um, everyone has their clearances. It doesn't, it doesn't cost anything for them to play basketball. I supply all the basketballs myself. Um, I have community members who are willing to help chaperone. Um, and it was, I wasn't aware that all the programs that I had to do had to be approved by council. So when I had to, I had a good amount of kids down there, and every time I do the open gym, it probably averages between twenty and thirty kids. So to have to stop doing that is, is definitely, um, a downfall. Um, but like I said, I wanted to add that in there. I wrote a letter, um, to council, to you guys, and, um, would like that to be added on along with the summer feeding program. That it, like I said, it would be on a weekly basis. Um, I can provide dates, but I'm just asking that it continues on the weekly basis. Um, the timeframe is usually from six to eight p.m., and that would usually be on Thursdays. Um, but I'm open to any questions that you guys have.
I don't really have a problem with anything that you really said right there. The, in the past, we had something called the rec board that would kind of oversee these things, and the rec board hasn't been meeting successfully with any quorum for quite some time. And I do appreciate you coming and explaining these things to us so that we are aware of them. I don't know that it requires, uh, action by the council other than that we give you permission to do that, and I think that's appropriate. Do you have any thinking like that?
I think, um, this is, that's perfect, but I only request that the city holds information of clearances on the folks that are gonna be chaperoning, just for legal purposes.
And there will always be some, there will always be somebody supervising.
It's, it's always usually me.
Okay.
And of course, I have my clearances. I wouldn't be able to work down there without them.
Do we have to put that up as a motion or can we just approve it?
I think that they can go through your city administrator to set it up and-
Just make sure the councils are aware of it.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see a problem with it, Julian. I'd, I'd-
Okay.
Yeah, I think we just-
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Julian.
Well, this is not a question and answer.
Well, he's on the agenda, right?
No, you can talk about the agenda too, but this is his floor right now.
Thank you for coming down.
It's not a question to Julian. It's a question to council. If there's, you have any other questions about agenda items?
Well, I had a question about agenda items. You wouldn't let me talk?
You can address the council.
My question was not directed to, well, it is directed to council, but I have to ask Julian a question first. Julian, when did they stop you from doing this, this event that you usually do?
Last Thursday.
So last Thursday, they said you couldn't do it.
They said that it needed to be approved by council.
But you've done it the Thursday before?
Yes.
Nobody knew.
What do you mean, nobody knew? If you told him he couldn't do this Thursday, he did it last Thursday.
Could I ask a question? Could I ask Julian a question? Who told you you couldn't do it?
Um, we have weekly meetings with, um, Cheryl, the mayor, and Mr. Mike, and, um, it was told to me by them that, um, the programs that, there were several things that I was doing that was not approved by council, the summer feeding program, the open gym, and I was told that all of those programs that involved the free use of the civic center needed to always be approved by council, and that's why I couldn't do the open gym Thursday, because I was not on the agenda for last Thursday. That's why I came tonight.
Oh, I think maybe there's a little communication error there, but, uh, I think you do need to inform us what's going on down there.
We do need to know.
Yeah, we need to know. And I think moving forward, if you contact the mayor, city administrator-
In advance.
In advance, you'll be able to do what needs to be done there.
And, Don, I think the other thing, um, maybe it isn't, and you got trust stuck in this, is if the rec board isn't doing its function, which he would have went- Well, when it- But what I'm saying is, you're right. If, in the past, all to my knowledge, the person, Julian's job would have went to the rec board-
Yeah.
And the rec board would have came to council or less, let us know by minutes or something, and there's a huge disconnect.
Julian, I wasn't aware the rec board wasn't meeting. I wish you would have contacted me.
The rec board is meeting by themselves, but when it was discussed that the rec board would not have day-to-day management of the civic center, my direct contact and supervisor is Mr. Corpwatch. So that's who I reported to when, even when the rec board was meeting. But once they decided they didn't want the day-to-day management of the civic center, I just started having my weekly meetings and reports with him. But they, they, no, they don't come down to it.
Well, there's still a, a big disconnect.
Yeah.
The rec board, by resolution, I suppose, was defined to take care of things like administering the rec, the civic center.
Who appointed them?
Previous administration.
We did one. There are five, five-year terms? Four or five-year terms, I think.
I think Mike that sits on there, we have reappointed him.
Well, Mayor, could you replace him?
Well, what good is a rec board if they don't do nothing?
Well, I think we're going to address that.
You know, I ran that civic center for a year by myself, okay? And I took care of everything. I paid the bills. I took care of all. And I had who I wanted to play basketball in there, and they were paying, and I did, I used the money to put back into the civic center, and it worked out fine. I mean, why do you have to go through all this rickety road to have some down with the kids down there? That don't even make sense.
Well, ju-
You people-
We didn't do it.
Don't help these kids around here at all, okay? You do nothing. And then you wanna stop them from going down there playing the basketball. That place should be open every day.
All we wanna know, do is know about it before it happens. That's the only thing we-
Know about it before it happens.
That's right. That's all we ask. Exactly. We should have a schedule. We don't.
And every time I do it, I make flyers and I post them. I've addressed the newspaper. I put it on Facebook. I hang flyers on the door. And every time when it's done, I all, I, when I was doing it before, I always gave a report to, um, the mayor and the-
But in this case, we did not know about these events before they were happening.
Julian, can you give us a monthly calendar in advance? Or do, or does this stuff happen like?
No, I can give you a monthly calendar, um-
Could you get that to us for the rest of, for, uh, July, August, and so forth? Can you get to us before the events? If you can get that to us, we can be more than, more aware of what's going on.
So what, can't you open that every day? I mean, you got these kids running around here. You'd rather pour them to be out here causing problems with other-
As long as there's supervision there every day, I don't have a problem with that. And it needs to be on the schedule. That's all we're saying.
As long as there's supervision there?
As long as there's-
And they have their clearances.
Excuse me?
And they have their clearances.
And they have their clearances, yes.
And they have what?
Clearances.
For what?
For to be around children.
Children.
Out state law.
The kids have to have clearances.
No, no, no.
The supervisors.
Supervisors.
I got clearances. I've had clearances for years. I've worked with the kids for years.
Well, if you wanna assume that responsibility, come talk to us and bring us your, bring us your-
I ran that gym by myself for a year, and I had no problem.
Remember, in twenty or twenty-one, and I don't remember what it was- In twenty or twenty-one, and I don't remember the year it was, there was individuals like yourselves that were running the rec board. They had no problem. Like, there was never problems. Money was turned in, everything goes. And the past mayor decided he didn't want those people there anymore. Let's be honest, it's facts. And he turned around and got rid of everybody. Matter of fact, didn't get rid of them, I apologize. They resigned. They all resigned. And he put people whom he wanted on there for whatever reason. Now, that doesn't seem to be working out.
Well, you all need to get rid of the rec board because the rec board is no good for nothing. They have meetings with them. What good are they doing? I'm on the rec board in Menneson. So what? You're not doing anything. You're supposed to be out here helping these kids that's running around in the street and letting them do things instead of having them-
Nobody's arguing with you.
Not going places. You, you wanna have them arrested. I'm a youth commissioner. And we get more kids from Menneson, up, from that, up on that hill in trouble about fighting and all that nonsense, and they, when they could be down there playing basketball and doing something else with the energy.
Well, that's being addressed now.
It's being taken care of.
And you all sit up there talking, making all these funny looking rules that, that don't even make sense. I can see that gym not being open at night when there ain't nobody around, but that gym should be open every day for them kids. We, you do nothing for these kids.
Well, there's somebody there, that's fine.
The rec board ain't nothing but a name. That's it, 'cause they don't do nothing. A rec board is supposed to see that the kids are doing stuff around to keep them out of trouble.
We understand and agree with you wholeheartedly. We will, uh, I think we addressed that. Thank you very much.
You do it wholeheartedly.
Absolutely.
You can't prove by me. I don't see any kid hitting nothing from it.
Let's move on. Is any other comments on agenda items? At this time, I'd like to ask this listener to give us his report.
Thank, excuse me. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I worked with WEC engineers and the contractors for phase A, three A and three B of the sewage project. All the insurance and contract documents are in place. I think the mayor's gonna update the progress of that, um, momentarily. Also, there are more demolition hearings scheduled for, at five-thirty before your July sixth meeting. Uh, that's part of the county ARPA demolition project. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Treasure, would you like to give us your, well, he's afraid we don't have a treasure here.
He gave it his report last meeting, and as did the controller.
How about a controller? Okay, perfect. In which case, let me give a little update about what all's been going on around here. First off, um, two of the most exciting and important projects the city has ever undertaken have kicked off over the last, for, off after fifteen years of working. They are tied to the reason why everybody in Menneson is paying an additional twenty-seven dollars a month with their sewer bill. It is the reason why we spent so much energy with the USDA to obtain a fifteen million dollar loan, followed up with a four million dollar grant, and augmented with a two and a half million dollar Penn Vest loan. It's the reason why we won't become another Flint, Michigan with major infrastructure problems. So let's review. The project has been broken up into a number of phases, including phase four with Penn Vest to fix the major bottlenecks in the sewer system coming down Nine Street, Delaware, and Shawnee. This was part of a two-point-two million dollars project and is winding down over the next couple of months. Yes, they will fix Delaware where they, and where they cross nine oh-six near East Gate and the Nine Street. You'll get that all going. They do have some work going on up at the Knox Reed, the Nine Street Park area even now, but once that's finished, they'll work on the roads, and they're getting close. It's the reason why we're working with the Mon Valley Sewer Authority on phase five to build an EQ tank on Parinte to regulate the flow coming down from City Park. And that'll be ongoing here over the next, uh, few months as well. So as phase three that we have going on now, is to repair the sewer system throughout the city and funded through USDA and interim loan from PNC Bank. It's, it's, um, not out of order. Phase three coming after phase four is not really out of order. It really makes sense. It's when they initially laid out the map and said, this will be phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. It just turns out that we're now at phase three. So there's phase three, phase three has been broken up into three different prod, prod, uh, parts. Phase three A, these are the key lines that are from eight inches to twenty-four inches, and they use a cured-in-place process. This can best be described that they're putting a tube in the, in the pipeline, they're bonding this tube to the inside of the pipe, and it's both making it impervious and structurally sound again. So that's a way to fix some of the old pipes between eight and twenty-four inches. Um, that project is a one-point-six million dollar project. One, one million, six hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-five cents. It will be completed by September the eighth of twenty twenty-four, four hundred and fifty days from last Monday when we, we kicked this project off, or Tuesday. Phase three B is the bigger pipe. It's the thirty-six inch to eighty-four inch pipe. They're gonna use centrifugally cast concrete to line the inside of the pipe. This is much bigger pipe. This is being awarded to, uh, Municipal and Contractor Sealing Products for three-point-six million dollars. Three million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars. It will also be completed by the same timeframe. They both have four hundred and fifty days to fix the project. The real problem is, there's a phase three C. Phase three C has not been awarded yet. Phase three C is really one that will be going from manhole to manhole to manhole throughout the entire city, fixing all the, the sewer lines in the neighborhoods. Um, right now, it's being held up for some federal permitting that still has to be done. That may happen next week. It may happen two months from now. We don't know. But until that permitting is given to us, we can't move forward with that project. It's really those two projects that this last, we started last Tuesday, that I can't really understate the importance it is to the city to have this start working. I was so excited on that Tuesday. After fifteen years of work that this city has undergone, we finally got those projects underway, and they were, they were given, uh, the right to move forward. So on down, on to tonight's meeting. In accordance to sunshine laws in this state, we advertise our agenda on the, uh, our agenda on the internet. We post it on the door at least twenty-four hours in advance. We have handouts for everybody that wants one. It's on, uh, Facebook and it'll be there. It's on, it's live right now. It's, uh, this is really so that everybody has the opportunity to review what we're going to be talking about today and give us an opportunity to give your input to us, to talk to us about what your, your feelings are and so forth. That's the reason why we have comments on agenda items only. That allows you to express your, your ideas before we rerule on them. It's the comments at the end of the meeting that are a little bit more wide open, but let's think about that for a little bit. Those comments are really intended to provide the, the people, the constituents, in order, an opportunity to suggest items for negotiation, for the next meeting, the things that we need to be considering.
It's more than that.
No, this is what is, that's what the purpose of this council meeting is, for the items that we can talk about here. This, we have a town hall that can talk about all different kinds of things that we go- This is not your time to talk. This is not your time to talk. Be quiet.
Okay?
Be quiet. No, I'm not. The bottom line is, there's, there is an alternative. Other communities have done it. I don't wanna go there. I really don't believe that this is the right thing to do, but there are other communities in the Mon Valley that require that comments be presented in writing twenty-four hours in advance. Then the comments are less limited to a three-minute presentation. I don't wanna go there, but I am not going to tolerate insulting or condescending comments that are directed individually to co, to council here. That is just not what the purpose is. You're welcome to speak at the end of the meeting. We can talk about it. We can debate it, but it needs to be kept civil. It does not need to be, uh, something that's beyond that. That said- I'm not saying there was a problem. I'm just saying, this is just some of my thoughts and things that I wanted to talk about. Okay, but wait until, wait until the end of the meeting. At this time, uh, I would like to introduce this motion that we talked about, and I'll go ahead and read it. A motion to approve the summer feeding program at the Menneson Civic Center at eight sixty-one Donner Avenue from June nineteenth through August ninth, eleventh. Ages eighteen and under are welcome to participate. Is sponsored by the Westmoreland County Food Bank. Monday through Thursday, breakfast will be served from ten a.m. to eleven a.m., lunch from twelve to one. The program, and the program is included. There'll also be mobile food markets available June twenty-sixth, uh, July seventeenth, July thirty-first, from noon to one p.m. I'd like to say one thing, was, is there a second to that?
Second. Question.
Okay.
What is a mobile food market?
Well, he just laughed, so it's hard to say. But I assume that they have-
Trucks with produce and related items.
Yeah. I would like to point out that-
Like a mobile farm.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much.
This does present an opportunity to the city too. One of the things at that civic center that needs a lot of work is the kitchen. And the fact that we're going to be doing a public feeding program out of that kitchen for several months here this summer will allow us to present to CDVG the ability to use CDVG funds to get the kitchen upgraded. And that's, that's a huge thing that we've been fighting, trying to find ways to get that kitchen fixed. And this will give us the opportunity to do that, I do believe. So, any other questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Aye. Un, unlike my normal way, I'm gonna go ahead and read these motions here. A motion to approve the tax exoneration request of property located at six forty Delaware is approved by the City of Menneson Tax Exoneration Board. The property ID is twenty zero-two zero-eight zero four-two-eight in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. Motion to approve the tax exoneration request of property located at six forty-eight Delaware is approved by the City of Menneson Tax Exoneration Board. Property ID number two-zero zero-two zero-eight zero four-two-nine in the amount of one thousand, ninety-six dollars and eighty-six cents. Could I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor Moser?
Yes. Um, I'm gonna ask the, uh, city administrator to lead us on this next one here. I'm gonna ask the city administrator to lead us on this next one here that has to do with the placement of a sign designating Menneson as Tree USA community with either the City Park or a location designated by council.
Well, this, this designation was received by the Shade Tree Commission, and they received a plaque and a sign that we'll display here at City Hall, but they also need a designated spot within one of the parks to display the larger sign. So if we could have discussion on maybe where that would go, or best go, City Park, Ninth Street, whatever council decides.
They put, they put trees at all the different parks, the boat launch.
They have done that work, yeah, absolutely.
They've done it all over the place, so there's lots of opportunity for a place to place the sign, I would think.
Right.
Did the Shade Tree Commission have a recommendation?
They, they were gonna defer to you as council to do that, so they were open to any of the locations that they've done work at.
Does anybody have a preference?
Also, they planted some trees in some of the areas. As you come into town, there are those islands.
Down at the War Memorial, when you come into town, is it there?
You could, you could try that.
We could find a nice location as you came into town.
Okay.
And right there where they planted trees.
How big of a plaque is this?
I think it's like 24 by 12. It's a nice size, and it needs, we'll need our help to display. They'll need the city crew to help us to do that.
What's it made of?
Like that sign, Plexiglas on wood.
Laminate.
Laminate, I guess is what the, yeah.
Yeah, it would be the plastic and aluminum core.
Right.
Plastic, laminate.
I would like to see a City Park, but that's me. They got the most trees there.
Yeah, all kinds.
All kinds.
Yeah. Well, they have planted some trees down there. I just would like to put it where it'd be most visible for people coming in.
You think it'd be visible on that, that median coming into town at the...
Yeah, right before the War Memorial.
Okay. If we can locate a place where it can be read, I think that's probably good. Okay.
Yeah. Or City Park.
I think downtown side. Right by the, you're talking about the War Memorial from Exxon?
Yeah.
Pretty nice. Where the road split from 906.
But then again, he has a point. Not the top of your head. That's what I was just gonna say. I kinda agree with him. Maybe it's City Park where people could see it. Yeah. That's, I was just gonna say that. We're thinking of life there, chief. That's dangerous.
All right, well, let's, let's make a motion to place this at the, at the City Park.
Well, I was just gonna suggest, since we're beautifying Madison Park, why can't we add it up there?
We could.
Absolutely. It's starting, we're, we're starting to show that community area that we, we care. Why can't we put a sign up there?
I don't have a problem with that either.
But is it gonna be seen? I don't know.
Well, I think you'd get more traffic down at City Park, but a lot of people walk down there. You have a lot of, you have a lot of functions down there. It makes no difference to me at all.
Let's do City Park, then.
Okay.
There along the walking path where the trees are.
Do you like to make that motion, Mayor?
Make a motion for a proper placement of the sign along the walking path, walking track at City Park, designating Menneson as a Tree USA community with either, with the City Park. Could I have a second? Any further discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
"A motion to approve the construction of brute of a book carousel, carousel, at the city walking track at a cost incurred by the, by a Menneson resident for citizens to exchange books during their visit to the park. This is an innovative, this initiative is an action item suggested by our Menneson Shade Tree Commission."
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Orzyn Chakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. "A motion to pay the following invoices from the general fund in the amount of $33,585.76. All invoices are attached to the Agenda as Attachment A."
Is there a second?
Second.
Call the roll. Are questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Motion to pay the following invoices from the Liquid Fuels Fund account in the amount of $12,256.55. All invoices are attached to this Agenda as Attachment B."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Make a motion to pay the following invoices from the Recreation Board fund in the amount of $110.31. All invoices are attached to the Agenda as Attachment C."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Motion to pay the following invoices from the Grant Fund in the amount of $3,960.83. All invoices are attached to the Agenda as Attachment D."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Motion to transfer $4,000 from the general account to the healthcare account."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Motion to approve the transfer of $74,015.50 from the general fund to the payroll account to cover payroll expenses."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Motion to transfer $8,597.41 from the general account to the, to the healthcare account for June 2023."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Following balances are in the accounts as of today. Fire Escrow, $20,715.19. ARC Fund, $247,241.85. Recreation, $2,724.80. Debt Service, $937,477.18. Healthcare, $4,380.5. Grant Fund has $47,906.86. Liquid Fuels has $218,343.85. Parks has $75,881.34. General Accountant has $737,142.35. General Accountant, the Community Bank, has $13,922.60. Payroll has $10,687.91. Refuge has $241,390.34. And line usage has $645,331.60." Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Councilman John Nestor for his report.
Thank you, honorable mayor, members of council, real officers, real office, and citizens of Menneson. Here's the following report for the public safety for the month of May 2023. The following report will be the Police Department receipts for the month of May 2023. Miscellaneous collections. Copies of police accident reports, $90. Restitution, $192. Total miscellaneous collections is the following, $190.92. The following are the court receipts for the District Justice Office. Vehicle code fines collected, $571.88. Crime code fines collected, $485.23. City ordinance collected, $2.64. Code enforcement collected, $20.95. Total receipts from the District's Justice Office is a grand total of $1,080.71. Total receipts collected for May 2023 is $1,271.63. The following are the citations for May 2023 from the city police department. Total, 141. Year-to-date, 551. Following is the code activity report for May 2023. Habitation permits, 11. Correction letters, 28. Animal complaints, 9. Miscellaneous complaints, 42. Health inspections, 4. Office meetings with residents, 6. Citations issued, 12. Hearings, 3. Building permits, 3. Zoning permits, 5. Complaints of grass, noise, abandonment of vehicles and homes. The following report is the Menneson Municipal Fire Chief's report for May 2023. Vehicle accidents, 1. Carbon monoxide leak, 1. Structure fires, 1. Trees down calls, 1. Wires down call, 1. Automatic fire alarms, 6. Brush fires, 2. Landing zone, 1. Electrical fires, 3. Still fires, 1. Calls outside the city are the following. Structure fire, Washington Township, 1. Landing zone, Shawlory, 1. Trees down, Ross Draver Township, 1. Structure fire, Shawlory, 2. Automatic alarm, Washington Township, 1. Total calls, 24. Total firefighters, 295. Firefires per call, 12.29. Total man-hours, 430. The following report is the Mon Valley Emergency Medical Services for the month of May. Emergency calls, 10. Fire standbys, I'm sorry, emergency calls, 100. Fire standbys, 10. Refers, 7. Total incidents, 117. Mayor, motion to accept quotes, or quote, from the Certusite Fire Safety and Life Safety Services to serve 23, to service 23 fire extinguishers for the city of Menneson in the amount of $312.08. See attachment, attachments as Exhibit 3.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Motion to accept Certusite, oh, Fire Safety and Life Safety Services to inspect the service up to 10 sensors and the fire alarm system at the City Hall in the amount of $515.06. See attachment as Exhibit 4."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Motion to accept Certusite quote, 'To replace dialer on the fire alarm at City Hall in the amount of $793. See attachment as Exhibit 5.'"
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
"Motion to accept Certusite quote, 'To provide service agreement and provide notification services for appropriate, for appropriate alarms emanating from City Hall in the amount of $1,141.56. See attachment as Exhibit 6.'"
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Comment, Mayor.
Please.
The initial term on the cover page is for 12 months, but if you look under paragraph 1, it still has five years.
I will make sure that gets corrected before you say it.
And all, all three of these agreements will automatically renew unless the city provides them notice 60 days from the expiration date. So these look like they're running from July 1st to June 30th. You need 60 days before then if you do not want to renew it.
Very good.
I think we have a motion on the floor. Is that, okay.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nester?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
"Motion to accept Certusite Fire Safety and Life Safety Services quote, 'To provide a service agreement in the fire alarm system for the city of Menneson annexed building contingent upon the pricing not to exceed the total amount to be billed for the same service at the city of Menneson City Hall located, location site listed above in motions B, C, and D.'"
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Same comments. Paragraph 1 has the term of five years.
Okay, I will...
The cover sheet does have a year. They just need to adjust it.
I will get that corrected.
I had a question, and I just lost it. Is this pro-rated? Being that say, that's for the annexed building we're talking about, correct?
Right.
Let's assume we enter into a contract, and let's assume two months we sell the building. Do we get credit back on what we paid, or is this just paid monthly? Or we're paying up from for the whole year, and we're stuck with the whole year?
Or we sell it with the building and move it?
Does it say in the contract that it's transferable? If it doesn't, we can't do that.
Well, we're just asking for a quote. We can always make that...
Yeah.
Contingent.
That's a good point. That's a good point.
Just question.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll address that as well. Any other comments? Call the roll.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
At this time mayor I would yield the floor thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gregor it's your turn.
Uh yes Parks Department report for May two thousand twenty-three cleaned the major parish civic center picked up litter and refuse at all the park locations in the city planted flowers at East Gate Island mowed all parks and ball field locations and prepared for events trimmed the bushes and shrubs at the library assisted the street department as Also we have a motion to offer a lease agreement to any kind of where Danielle Volker for a four month lease for the city annexed building any kind of where we'll provide insurance indemnifying the city from all liability at the site and will be responsible for all utilities at the site see attached as exhibit seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
I have a motion to approve the purchase of a bench by Dorothy Yubonowitz on behalf and in memory of her husband Coach Charles Chuck Yubonowitz to be installed at the city park that should be walking track.
Right.
City of Mennesse it would commemorate his over fifty-five years of coaching youth football in the city of Mennesse and his lifelong dedication support and devotion to the city of Mennesse see attached as exhibit A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Pardon me?
Any discussion?
I think it's to honor him I think it's really a nice thing to do he did a lot for the kids of the city of Mennesse.
Call the roll.
Councilman Nestor?
Aye.
Councilman Gregor?
Aye.
Councilman Orchakowski?
Yes.
Mayor motion?
Yes.
That concludes my report.
At this time I'd like to open the floor for public commute.
Okay I'm gonna begin with framing the forum for the citizens to ask questions after you conduct your business here you expose elements that we're not aware of so the public has a right to question it and to critique.
Absolutely.
Okay now it seems like we're spending too much time trying to formalize conduct the big issues are here one you spent six thousand dollars for a small demo to patch Nash Street.
Mm-hmm.
And I was up there that that's not gonna last this winter and what happens what we're gonna do next you have no solution okay so you're not gonna renew it which you have a right so I wanna know what what's the plan here because all we got is potholes the potholes are getting worse.
Absolutely here's what I've been thinking first off I went up there and I met with the two people that live right there by that corner where the that they did the patches and they were there when the patches were done one of the people used to be the code officer for the borough of California and was involved with the paving of roads in California the other used to be on the streets department so they both understood what was going on there they were both impressed with the speed at which they did that both of them were somewhat surprised that first off six tons of material went there and that's all the further it went and then last but not least they said that they're not entirely convinced that that is the most effective way to patch roads so they agreed with you in a lot of cases what we talked about was and we still gotta discuss this with council and it occurred another meeting but what where do we go from here if patch management is not the perfect solution how do we know what the perfect solution is and what I would like to propose is that we look at other alternatives and continue working on Nash Street because we can compare apples to apples we can see what the patch manager did here we can see what the next company does there and so forth and so on.
That's fine what other alternative?
Well one one well we are it'll be defined and we not committing to this yet but my proposal is that we involve our streets department with hot patch as opposed to cold patch and see what they can do with hot patch.
Okay so when you're gonna initiate this?
Well that'll be the next future council meeting we gotta negotiate with them and so forth so there's some time this is gonna take some time it's not gonna be today.
Alright so um we have other issues here too for instance what are you doing with the inventory that the seamstress left next door?
Well she's still occupying that building next door.
Yeah you said she immediately gonna leave.
No we just did a four month lease for her just now.
So who's responsible if her equipment gets ruined?
She is.
You wrote that in the?
Yeah and she she has insurance to protect her building.
But that's another can of worms because there's gonna be people with problems coming down the road you're gonna honor them too with special services?
Well we'll do what we can but consider this we're working very hard to bring businesses into this community we wanna see new businesses come here why would we kick out existing businesses that are here?
Okay fine I was at the redevelopment the zoning board and what I don't like is this you guys are desperately reaching for straws you accommodate one or two private parties to grab so much land so many buildings so many properties I don't like that okay because you're not gonna get a tax base from these people that's all I'm gonna tell you right yeah okay now I wanna go on to something else. I wanna know why you people are not making some sort of a stand like I was at the school board Tuesday no one from council has a group or a letter to be presented that we like you people to rein in your your tax increases and budget your budget so you're not keep increasing taxes on the taxpayers in twelve years it went up four times okay but nobody is taking an interest I was there and nobody was there.
I've been to every single school board meeting in the last year except for the yeah I wasn't there Tuesday because I had I had a RDA meeting at the same time.
They vote let's send somebody else you can send Mike the thing is I don't see you guys standing up for the taxpayers who voted for you now one last proposition here you keep bringing in people you start with the economic summit in January then you had this other group that came in during the last hometown meeting okay and all they're talking about is potential options no one brings in any private sector no employer no bank no nothing and I felt like I felt like you guys were having romper room last Thursday because you were asking all the little people there what would you like like sitting on Santa Claus lap what would you like to see in this spot in that spot and everybody's picking oh I'd like to see this I'd like to see that with no money with no with no private interest who could have developed this and then they were misled thinking that the city's gonna do all this the government does not produce wealth I want you to know this you people gotta start looking into what government is supposed to do all they do is they they put a burden on your taxes so they could finance their services and those services aren't done appropriately that's why we got potholes and we got buildings done now lastly what are you gonna do about those two buildings that that got burnt down and got water damage?
They've been turned over to the county for demolition.
The county's gonna do act on today and then the paper you guys don't inform the public.
They've not gone out for bid yet.
Talked about it last meeting.
Yeah.
You talked about it there's a lot of talk but I wanna see like concrete steps.
Well it's the people that gave that presentation last Thursday are the people that do that.
No they gave you options and it was even written in the paper says we're exploring options okay options.
For development.
What does that mean that doesn't mean it's etched in stone.
Okay thank you.
For any of you who did not know me I'm Dorothy Yubonowitz I would like to thank council for the approval bench you on my husband's.
Well thank you so much for the donation that's a fantastic thing and best to you.
Melissa Lacy sixteen twenty-four Maple Avenue I have several comments and it's directed to city council.
Can you hear me? Hello can you hear me now? Okay I'm a resident of Mennesse and I grew up here and I come to these meetings twice a month I try to make into all of them sometimes I do miss it but I go to the redevelopment authority meetings and city council meetings this last Tuesday or this past Tuesday I was at the redevelopment authority meeting and a derogatory statement was directed to me by Lou Merriques and the being is that I ask questions I ask questions with the redevelopment authority I ask questions to the city council and because you feel as though you don't have to answer them I become labeled as disruptive now I took offense to what Mr. Merriques said to me but I'll take care of that at a different time but then their solicitor Trapani said that he was going to limit what public comment you can make when you come to these meetings and that was directed by what you just stated when you opened up this meeting city council it doesn't matter if I'm dedicated three minutes or two minutes or five minutes I'm gonna ask my question to every board meeting that I attend and I do not like being labeled as disruptive because I'm gonna tell you what I feel like what you're doing because you're not basically letting the citizens of Mennesse know what you're doing until it's done.
Thank you and we do.
My name is Pina one five oh sixty. You can hear me right? Can you hear me?
Why don't you give him the microphone?
There you go. Thank you you can hear me now right?
Can hear you now.
Um my name is Pina I'm in Montraver Plant one five oh sixty I went to the same meeting that she was talking about and I thought it was to me you know the people that came were basically the same people that came here a month ago and they came to they said they were gonna put five homes in Motherall Avenue and but they didn't have they haven't applied for the money yet and then they also said that they will apply for the money sometime so their plan was to build low income homes or you know little bit little bit less money for people to be able to afford and the question was asked who can afford he said it was gonna be a hundred thousand dollars and the people that we're talking about like the young man that was here just a few minutes ago talking I mean they just gave them a raise of three bucks he makes fifteen dollars an hour guys like him you never be able to get in a home never you know so the people that need help even though they said they're gonna build five homes in Motherall Avenue first of all they don't have the money approved and in place and then who are they gonna help if they're gonna help low income people then those people most of them white or black they don't have the money for the type of homes that they're talking about because Brian guy from the county who's the CEO of the land bank he said two hundred thousand the homes that they were gonna build and there's no way in hell that somebody who has been on welfare a good part of their life or making thirteen or fourteen dollars an hour is gonna be able to afford even to pay the taxes okay so I thought that that's pretty terrible as far as I'm concerned they have to come more realistic on what the homes that they're building and who are they for and how much they cost the other part that had concerned me the meeting they had here were Brian Lawrence who's the CEO of the land bank or the county redevelopment authority and the other guy they put in the he put in the presentation his name was Phil they did a very good job on making the presentation the only thing that they left out is we got me a mile group with a bunch of preachers they're looking for free handout from the city of Mennesse they pay zero taxes and they sit on a board and most of them are out of town one is from Yiddishport and Clerken the other one's from Bel Vernon and none of them from Mennesse I've been in Mennesse for sixty-one year I'm seventy-five years old.
How old are you now?
I've never seen those people never ever you know so they're talking about helping our city but they all they do is talk nothing happens okay but on the meeting that they're talking that she's talking about the meeting that she went I went to that meeting and I did in my opinion they treated her like crap she got a name like I have a name they don't treat her like crap that's what they did okay and then in order for them not to have an argument because they don't like for you to question them they called the meeting to an executive session so we had to leave that's fine we got back in there and then they adjourned the meeting and the part that gets me it's a joke but I'm not
Excuse me Pino Pino excuse me was it on the agenda to call an executive session?
Yeah no no interested because.
Did they tell you what the executive session was for?
They they there was an executive session.
No no let me ask you did they tell you what the executive session was for?
Yes.
Oh yes.
What was it for?
Property matters there redevelopment authority that's totally legit.
No the reason that it the reason that they said there was an executive session is because we were asking questions and there was no reason for us to ask any question and to boot next to that office upstairs there is a door normally they go inside there to have a meeting but the mayor he was the chief he was acting as the chief of police and he escorted us outside because he said that office does not have a door I said well the other office does a judge can do it but anyway I don't wanna get into I think he's just you know the guy here you gotta work on getting him out of office because he's not a good person to be representing Mennesse we need somebody that knows Mennesse we need some young guys and some guys in their fifties and sixties to run for office because this guy here he got three mayors and telling him what to do and if you don't believe me come here every morning you see their car parked right up front telling me what to do because he doesn't know nothing about Mennesse you got here you got he's out of town we're paying him fifty-five thousand dollars a year to do nothing we paid that young kid thirteen bucks an hour fifteen dollars an hour.
Did they cut his dollars?
Yeah and you call me that's fair.
Oh did they give him a raise and then cut his out?
Well let me go farther the garage they're talking the parking garage in the middle of town they told us he said that they got us a million two hundred thousand dollars to fix it okay so they can't fix it I said more than one meeting you know go to Long Pine they do that type of work get a free estimate they said no we talked to the our engineering company it is about a million two to fix it said okay so he turned around I belong to the city not to the redevelopment authority but he came to one of our meeting and he said that he was gonna willing to give it to the redevelopment authority so they could sell it so the guy that's interested in they talked about it on his meeting this past Tuesday he's from Rosco or something he wants the parking lot on the right and no the parking lot the you know the partial on the right and the partial on the left before he purchases but nobody knows what the number is in other words we don't know if they're giving it away we don't know if they're selling for fifty thousand dollars or for a dollar we really don't know that's a top secret job but I want you to know but that's where their plan is so if they're talking about rebuilding Mennesse they are not doing it they're giving it to churches that they come out of town they pay zero taxes and then they tell him what to do and another thing I don't believe that we come to city council to pray I got a church to go to pray I don't need him to pray and then screw me the ass later okay I don't need that BS that's a little rough but anyway I just want you to know you're not a good person you're not a good mayor and you're not the mayor I told you they tell you what to do and the guy on your right he's worthless for fifty-five thousand dollars give it to that young man to make some money thanks.
Anybody else have anything they wanna say?
How you gonna get kids stay here? You have jobs?
Could I have jobs?
Nothing wrong to do.
There's a couple there's a couple of things that we're working on first off his place is in the process of putting in a robotics center upstairs that will give opportunity for kids some kids that are interested in those type of activities to do things we've got the civic center we've got activities going on at his place as well we're trying hard to come.
His place is not a big and full earth.
Is it we're trying.
It's only for his selfish congregation that's only for he ain't from Mennesse he's for his own religious cause and you're gonna put all your burden.
I didn't put anything I'm just saying that he's developing some some opportunities for kids.
But what are you promoting him for?
Because he's gonna make some he's gonna make some for kids.
You promoting the advertisers?
I will promote every.
No just him why because you have lunch with him?
My name's Ed LaFever I live on Keystone Drive maybe I fell asleep Mr. Orizowski the general the grant fund what is the balance in a grant fund is this the federal fund?
It's the police fund that they get DEA money for.
Oh.
I where did I do my sheet?
Okay I just wondered what the origination was.
Forty-seven thousand nine hundred and six dollars and eighty-six cents I reported.
And the monies that came from the federal government is?
It's from DEA seizures drug busts things that come back to the Mennesse Police Department from their involvement in doing any of the drug busts or DEA work we used to have DEA on the force we don't anymore but that fund still comes through any drug money that comes through that's in collaboration with DEA and local police they get a percentage of it.
Okay the the difference between the general account and the general fund?
I didn't say general fund.
It says general fund.
Okay it's the same thing I give you a report on a general fund and the other general was what's a community bank leftover from previously before we changed back.
So the general fund is the bank account?
It's our fund that we pay all our general invoices to payroll healthcare insurance lights on things like that.
Okay then that's different from the general account. Okay, then, that's different from the general account? The general fund, the general account, is that's all one?
There's different accounts. All money comes into the city and is dispersed through different accounts. Payroll, payroll is something we pay the employees with, okay? The general fund is a catch-all, or everything that doesn't have its particular nook gets paid out of. We don't pay things that, like, there's a Kansas City check, we pay fifty-six thousand dollars every year. It's for the tractor that they purchased a couple of years ago. That does not come out of the general fund. That comes out of, I think it comes out of parks. Okay? So general fund is the fund that we work with, or I work with, and all of us work with every day and pay every day-to-day bills, unless they're specific. Does that help you?
Yes. I have a, if I'm permitted, I'd like to make a comment about the article in the paper about that town hall meeting and conducted by the two people from Westmoreland County. When I was working with two drug firms, I heard the same remarks. "We are trying to address, the clock is ticking, we have less than, we have to hit the ground running, we need your work and effort on the part of all of you." Government is no different, in a sense of their wording, than, than private firms. I, you know, in that article, someone's daydreaming. Laundry bats, shoe store, donut shop, ice cream shop, hardware store, clothing store, a theater, a skating rink, that's impossible. One last comment. Ernie is right. The private sector has to be contacted to, to provide a non-polluting industry that provides work for people in Manassas. Along with government funds. Tearing down homes, that's fine. Tearing down buildings, that's fine. But it has to be, it's two-sided. The, the private sector has to be involved. And, and, and I think that's the only way between local government and private industry. And I'd like to make a remark about this coke plant. I didn't know how coke was made. So this morning, I was talking to a, a young guy that works, had to work in a mill in a coke plant. And I said to him, I said, "Harry, what's that, that flame up there coming out? Is that gas being burned?" "No." I know, I asked him, "Is that, yes, is that gas?" He said, "No, it would be blue." He says, "It's byproduct of the coal production." And then I asked him, "How about the steam? Is that just steam?" "No, it has particles from the production of coke." So if you want to, in my opinion, if you want to really revitalize this town or city, you have to get rid of the coke plant. I, I come down, even tonight, there's an odor in the street. I come down to Foodland some days, terrific odor, sulfur or something. If I, if I had an ice cream shop, I would not want people to come to, in this, this air. I've recently wrote, wrote a letter to the EPA. I wanna see if scrubbers could be put into that. I think they're polluting the air. I have a woman living on top of the Dory Hill. She can't even put her dog out. And sometimes at night, after twelve o'clock, that odor floats up to the Manassas Park area. I think it's a detrimental industry. It's, it's not attractive. I don't know how some redeveloper could come in here and really suggest anything without monstrosity on the side of there, side of the river. I can see industry, a non-polluting industry. But I, I disagree with the closeness and the, I don't, I think these people are violating the Clean Air Act and I wanna find out about that. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
The people that came here from Westmoreland County, I want you to know that eighteen of them, eighteen, eighteen people that were there present, sitting at the table around, they do not belong to Manassas. Them are people that came either with the county people, people that were doing the presentation, and then you have the people from the churches, then none of them are from Manassas. Okay, they're here just for a freebie, like I told you. But there's eighteen out of forty-two people that were here. According to what he said, there was forty-two people. I didn't count it, but I know there was eighteen people here that didn't belong here. So just keep that in mind. You guys need to come, tell your neighbor to come to the city council and to the redevelopment meeting because these guys are not doing what is best for our town. I know what Manassas looked like when I came to this country in nineteen sixty-one. And we don't need nobody from you, Mexico somewhere, anti-union people to come up and tell us what to do.
Anybody else have any comments they'd like to make? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion. Will we adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is over.